Good evening, how are you, Dr. Lake?
I was nervous I was going to fall down the stairs on my heels, but I made it.
You made it, you made it.
Never shall we forget totally about it. We have to kind of take notes at this time of session.
And I'm giving a reminder to everyone too, when we're speaking, to speak directly into the microphone.
Directly into the microphone.
Uh huh. You're a professional.
Yeah, well, I did that at the, uh, Betu Tetcha, I almost blew out Irwin's eardrums. That mic was a little hot.
Oh, Betu Tetcha, right?
Mm-hmm. So, I've been just going around talking to people like, okay, this is how you pronounce it. Just break it down.
How do you say that word, black?
Okay, now, we're in a different place.
Oh, you, your, your Wi-Fi?
My Wi-Fi.
It's the IS623, yes?
Yes, there it says, that's what it is. But, am I connected here? Seems I am, last year's strength good, let's connect.
Good evening. The October 12th, 2021, regular school board meeting of ISD 623 Roseville area schools is hereby called to order. Clerk Johnson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Anderson?
Here.
Oh, sorry. Director Chu?
Here.
Director Shaw?
Here.
Chair Bogushevsky?
Here.
Treasurer Goggins?
Here.
Clerk Johnson is here.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening, Madam Superintendent?
No, no agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Announcements, I think we do have an announcement?
Yes, I'd like to start, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking our entire extended school community for their support during this extremely painful time in District 623. It's with a heavy heart that I share tragic news about the unexpected death of a member of our school community, Principal Brian Coland. Our hearts and thoughts go out to Principal Coland's family and all who knew and loved him. Principal Coland had been a member of Roseville area schools community for nearly 30 years, most recently serving as Edgerton principal. Principal Coland's family has given us permission to share with you that he died of suicide and asked that we continue to address the importance of mental health supports. Social workers and counselors have been available and will be available to meet with all students and staff in the coming days and weeks at both Edgerton and Emmett D. Williams. Principal Coland was a warm and caring person, his presence and leadership will be deeply missed, and his memory will be celebrated by the entire Roseville area schools community. As an example of Principal Coland's leadership style, I've collected some comments from some of his former students. They fondly recall all of his leadership during their active Read-a-thon activities at Emmett D. Williams and Edgerton. They said, "Principal Coland kissed an alligator, pig, and a kangaroo at school, he once ate 100 mealworms, he shaved his head and his twin brother's head, camped on top of the school roof, and even put his desk on the school roof." Students had some words to share about Mr. Coland, and collectively, they said, "He knew everyone's name in the school, he was so very kind, playful, jolly, always smiling, and likable." At this time, I'd like to thank the Edgerton and EDW, parents and families who created chalk art and supportive sign opportunities for students and staff as they arrived to school this morning. I'd also like to thank all of our school mental health professionals who were on site this morning and will be throughout the coming days and week, offering support to our students and staff. Finally, the community and district have drafted a plan to hold a vigil for Principal Coland this coming Monday at 6:30 PM at Emmett D. Williams, and we will have more information in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lake. I think we have another announcement comment regarding Apatu Tetcha, and with that, I'd like to introduce Karen Schaub. Karen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's kind of a hard presentation to follow, I know. Brian was appreciated by all of us, and we will miss him a lot. In honor of his caring about kids and caring about the school district, I want to take you through a little story with me. And, Michelle, will you hit the first slide? So way back in 1955, we had a Fairview Junior High School. And when I look at that, it brings back some memories from this past year of when the building was originally built the first time. Then over time, it turned into Fairview Community Center, and this is really one of the really nice shots that we had of the building. And as we moved on, we started to see some changes in the building. And then we saw really big changes in the building, and then it was like, this is real. This is real, this is what our school district and US school board members helped us create. And so we moved on from there, and on one of the walls, it says, "Thanks for the memories," that was in one of the walls before it came down. And it's really true, thanks for a lot of memories, a lot of students went through Fairview Junior High, a lot of students and adults went through Fairview Community Center. Then we got to October 2021, and I look at this picture, this was just taken outside our building, and it almost looks like one of the architect pictures, doesn't it? And so now we have our grass there, we have lots of beautiful things going on. So then that starts out our celebration to welcome new building into the Roseville area schools family. And here's Ashley, who helped join us, and our native drummers, as we were preparing to celebrate the fact that we were opening a new building. We believe that somewhere between probably 350 and 400 people joined us that night, which was really exciting, and Frank Shaw shared with us that we, some of us who've been around for a while, know about the Roseville bald eagle. And just as the presentation was starting, he shared with me that the bald eagle flew over our new building. Just makes me feel so good to think about things like that. And so we had a lot of folks, some folks joined us outside, some joined us inside, and up until 7 o'clock, we still had people walking through. So there were some people who said, "I came by, looked like too many people, I left and I came back, but I wanted to see what was going on." We had a variety of generations there, we had folks coming in, some of our older communities saying, "Tell me more about, what are you doing in pre-K? What is pre-K all about? What, you know, what changes are we having?" So that was really fun. Here we have our ribbon cutting, if you've never seen scissors, and Chair Bogushevsky can talk about how heavy that scissors was. And we cut it and we opened it. Then we had an opportunity to have a friendship dance, and our community members and some of our school board members and some of our staff joined in the friendship dance. We had some more singing, we had some wonderful native dancers, we loved the children that joined us that day, and here's just sort of a quick end of the night picture. Through that whole activity, that evening, we heard wonderful stories. We heard stories about our next door neighbor who has been keeping an eye on this building. And one night, he said, "You know, in the science lab or that room way up in the corner, the lights were on all night, and I'm sure I saw somebody, I saw something moving there, I know I saw something moving there." He went and he got his binoculars and looked in there, and it is our skeleton that we have hanging there. And he was, I think, joyful, and I think he also had a few laughs about it, because I think he was thinking, "Now, what do I do if somebody's really walking around that building?" But that talks a lot about our neighbors who care about the new building, who have chosen to come visit us, have chosen to celebrate the fact that our old building went down and our new building came up, and we are just as excited as we can be. And many of you were there to join us, and I know our staff really appreciated seeing each and every one of you that night. It was an exciting night to be part of the Roseville area community. So thank you, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for your support to make life different in Roseville for us.
Great, thank you. Karen, in my understanding is that all of the programs and services that were in the old building are in this one?
Most, most of them are.
Most of them are there.
A few of them have either moved on. Some of you may remember, at one point in time, probably about 65% of that building was all rentals, and we had a childcare, we had a lot of county programs there. By the time we closed Fairview, we only had like, one rental left. And so right now, we do not have any rentals in the building, we have no space for new rentals. So a lot of the programs either continued to stay there, or we found a different home for them.
And the pool looked wonderful to me, it's just as long as the old one was.
Absolutely.
I understand it heated to like 86 degrees or something constantly, which is great for those of us on the north side of our age, and also, my understanding was, that's great for teaching kids, because the cold is not a barrier, you know? And the senior store, is that open yet?
Senior store's not open, and the pool's not open, we hope to be opening around November 1st.
November 1st.
We're going to try to have some activities in the pool to engage people, to have a chance to come and be part of the new swimming community.
Wow. Well, and it's already mid-October, so November 1st is right around the corner.
Right around the corner, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, and the senior store, I had never availed myself of that even in the past, so when it does open, I'm going to head down there, because that's where seniors make crafts, dresses, knit goods, whatever, and sell them in the store. It's this really neat thing to do, and the public can come in, right?
Absolutely.
Through the secure entrance and shop there, and get a look at the inside when that opens up.
Those baby blankets and those bath towels, they fly off the shelves right away.
Wonderful.
Right away.
So already mark your calendars for November 1st.
Yes.
Head out over there and check it out.
So, once again, thank you for your tremendous support, we appreciate it, the staff appreciate it, and we're excited about the new journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I just have one question. For those who are not able to get a tour of Betu Tetcha, they could call and get a tour scheduled still.
Oh yeah, we do have some groups here and there that have called, I think our retired teachers are coming to visit us one night, and so absolutely, and just about anybody in the building, if they're available, can give a tour, so absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the community input section of tonight's meeting, where we invite members of our community to come and share their thoughts with us on whatever's on their mind. We'll go in order that folks had signed in, and just to remind everyone, there's a three-minute limit to speaking. Michelle, how are we showing the folks what the timing is? Is that what's up on the screen, so everyone can be aware of how much time they have left on the three minutes?
Yeah, we're going to make a whole live monitor.
Great, thank you very much. With that, the first speaker is Kathleen Nydiger.
Mike?
Good.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right. This speech has been written by Alan Holosik and me, Kathleen Nydiger, and my address is 1180 Greenbrier, Little Canada. We have consistently heard from the school board that critical race theory is not being taught at the Roseville schools. After the last board meeting, Alan spoke to the director of the student achievement for Roseville schools and inquired about the school district's equity program. The director of student achievement recommended Alan read an article titled "White Privilege: Unpacking the Invisible Knapsack" by Peggy McIntosh. Peggy McIntosh is the founder of CED, which stands for Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. CED has been training teachers across the nation since 1987, and it continues to today. This article is the perfect embodiment of what CRT is. Here are a few of the ways this article promotes CRT. It makes race the most important aspect of a person's identity. It tells the reader to look at everything through a racial lens and assumes a racist motivation behind any disparity, even to what color Band-Aids we use. It divides people into privileged versus not privileged, or oppressed versus oppressor. It advocates collective guilt over individual responsibility, and it claims that racism is so deeply embedded in the American society that only those who adhere to McIntosh's ideology can see it. The fact that this article was recommended by the director of the student of achievement at Roseville is proof that CRT is being taught in our schools, even though you don't use the letters CRT or the name. This school board must come to grips with this reality. Changing terminology does not change reality. We say to the board, "Stop with the word games and start focusing on academics, not activism." Therefore, as a school board, you have a choice to make regarding this topic. One, do you really want children to be taught this material? If so, you can do nothing and let it continue to be taught. Or number two, if you come to the conclusion you don't like this substance being taught to children, you have the authority to stop it, certainly by the start of the next semester. I hope you take this choice seriously, it is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nydiger. Next up, we have Kathleen Bart, and as a reminder, we do no longer require speakers to say their addresses as they speak. I'm sorry, Ms. Nydiger, I didn't remind people that, we did change that to add a little bit of safety to people who felt unsafe broadcasting that out, so thank you. Ms. Bart?
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of a few other people, and we would like answers to our questions as soon as possible. Equity Alliance Minnesota is an entity with the following mission statement on its website: "Through collaborative learning and advocacy, be the leading force for systematic educational integrity and integration." Equity Alliance apparently partners with various school districts for this purpose. Roseville is listed as a member, and even holds some of their teaching sessions at the Roseville Area Middle School. First, when did Roseville area schools become a member of Equity Alliance Minnesota? How much money is paid to this company to be a member, or for other expenses, and what is the source of this money? Two, how can the public access the information that Equity Alliance Minnesota acquired regarding Roseville? How has this company been used to improve the education of the students at Roseville schools? Three, has the Roseville school system, school board, made any policies, decisions, or changes with regard to curriculum, staff hires, or anything else as a result of Equity Alliance Minnesota efforts? If so, what specifically? Four, given that Equity Alliance Minnesota states in one of its educational programs that topics such as racism and white privilege, which is an obviously racist perspective, are taught, what effect has this had on practices in the schools and interactions with students by staff members based on their race? Five, if both levies pass, how much of the money gained from the second levy will be used to pay for such consultants as Equity Alliance Minnesota? Six, given that the Roseville board member, Mike Bodacheski, is also on the board of Equity Alliance Minnesota and even resides over its meeting as chair, how can the Roseville school district do business with this company, given the obvious conflict of interest? Number seven, your test results over the past 10 years have been particularly poor for children of color. It seems that efforts to eliminate the achievement gap has not worked. Have you noticed an increase or decrease in the academic outcomes of your students of color since spending money at Equity Alliance Minnesota? In conclusion, if your affiliation with Equity Alliance Minnesota has brought no benefit to the students most in need at our schools, I and other residents of the school district are asking you to stop the Roseville school district's affiliation with this company. Thank you. And I have my questions written out, and I would like to speak on it.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bart. Next, we have Kathy Romant.
Hi. As one of the founders of, co-founders of Do Good Roseville, I know that I'm speaking for our community when I say, "I trust you to do what is right for our students." That means teaching them a comprehensive history of our country, as well as a full picture of the different kinds of people that make up our community today. I know from years of programs that Do Good Roseville has hosted, that many of the people of my generation are very frustrated to learn, decades after graduating, that our education was incomplete and one-sided. That means we have decades of beliefs that we need to challenge. It would have been so much easier if we had a balanced education from the beginning. Unlearning is hard. I encourage you to continue to broaden your curriculum to allow for the voices of everyone to be heard. When I reflect on what I've learned, sadly, over just the last six years, I know that learning more about the lives of people that are different from me has made me a kinder and more empathetic person, and that's what I want for our children. That's different from telling kids what to believe, it's allowing them to become critical thinkers. As is always the case, when things are going well, most people do not take the time to show up for meetings or send emails of support. When I heard a group that's been coming out to multiple school board meetings to repetitively make a case against equity education, I thought about rallying our community to come to support the work you are doing. However, the people I know are, live very full lives raising their kids and doing things that have a positive impact on our community. We trust you to do what is right and to not be unduly influenced by a small number of voices that want to sidetrack you from the very important work that you have to do. If you are ever truly in doubt of the direction of our school district, let me know, I'll make sure you hear from an overwhelming number of people that support what you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romant. Next up is Lynn Huberty.
Hello, my name's Lynn Huberty, I am also the, I guess, founder of Roseville Activist Facebook group that I started after George Floyd's death, and also the march that occurred at Central Park that year. I have three daughters that have gone through Roseville, I have gone through Roseville. My daughter is a junior, and I have one that's in eighth grade. All of my children have stated that they feel they have been failed in the history of our country, and they want to learn the truth. I want to learn the truth. I feel like I've been brainwashed into this great America, it's not true. The only way to break this racial divide down is to learn about one another. Our education needs to be equitable to all races. That does not mean we're saying that white people are racist, we just need to educate everybody on what has happened, because people don't understand why certain races have struggled. There's generational trauma, people don't know about generational trauma and the causes of it. They think, "That's in the past, it's over and done with." It's not, it still affects our kids today. I don't have to tell my kids that when they're pulled over by the police to put their hands up and behave because they're going to get shot. I can't imagine that. I'm already scared enough with my kids getting into accident, much less having them fear the police, it's not okay. So, I beg and plead the board to keep on that path of continuing equitable education to all of our students. They deserve it, they need it, our community needs it. And I can guarantee you, there is a large community of Roseville that is backing what I'm saying. On the Facebook group, there's almost 500 people that have joined this voice, and if we need to, we will have all of those people come together and show you the support for following through with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huberty. Next up is Corinza Fisher.
Hi, I'm Corinza Fisher, I'm a parent, community member, I'm not an organizer, but I am mostly here to say thank you for the hard work and the hard decisions you've had to make in the last 18 months, and before that. I also very much hope to see you stand strong with your equity vision and not be daunted by negativity or criticism on that. It's not enough, but it is certainly more than nothing, and I think that we have to just keep allowing ourselves to say the words "white privilege." Just because somebody refers someone to an article about unpacking white privilege, it does not necessarily invoke this huge thing of critical race theory. That is such a buzzword, and I think if we can just stay really focused on the fact that the kids deserve better, they deserve the full history, black history is white history, the history of black people is the history of white people, it's our history and of America. And I just, I don't understand why there is so much fear around sharing the whole story with our kids. They deserve the truth, we deserved the truth, and I'm so thankful for the steps that I have seen, and I also really, really urge you to keep going and take it farther. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And then our final speaker this evening is Angela Byrne. Ms. Byrne?
Hi, good evening, Angela Byrne, proud Harambe parent. I'm going to keep my comments really brief tonight. I first want to extend my condolences for Principal Coland. I did not know him personally, but from what I'm hearing, it's quite a loss in the district. And then I am grateful to his family for sharing his story, I think it's really important that we talk about these things out loud, that mental illness and our struggles be shared in the light, and we can all hold and support each other together through it. And I am very supportive of additional staff for social emotional growth for our students, because I know our students are not immune to these kinds of feelings and overwhelming situations as well. So, thank you all for that, and warmth and grace to his family on our behalf out here that didn't know him, but know that he was part of this community. And then, real quick, I just want to share the definition of CRT, which was founded in the 1970s, it is not a new concept, but that it is a framework to examine the intersection of race and US law in law school courses, not K through 12 curriculums. A central tenet of CRT is that racism and disparate racial outcomes are the result of complex, changing, and often subtle, social and institutional dynamics, rather than explicit and intentional prejudice of individuals. So, we have a lot of work to do, as mentioned by a previous speaker, there are vast racial disparities in testing outcomes for students, and I think that needs to be continued to examined in depth, because our students do deserve better. We have a lot of work to do, but it is towards racial equity and telling the whole story, not cowering back behind our white privilege because we're afraid to hear the truth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. With that, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Your second?
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. We do have, I think, a retirement that Clerk Johnson will share with us this evening.
Yes, tonight, I move the re-
Yes, tonight I move the retirement of Finn C. Cheng, who's been a paraprofessional, most recently at Parkview Center School. Has worked in the district for 21 years. Continuing a trend of teachers and staff that stay with Roseville for a long time, usually decades. So with great appreciation, I move this retirement. Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
Todd? Again, any discussion? Other than, again, thank you. 21 years of service. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Retirement accepted. Again, we have gifts and I think Director Chu was going to share this with us tonight?
Yes. Yes, my pleasure and honor. We are always so grateful every time to read this amazing list of contributions and gifts. So we have an anonymous person who contributed to the ECSE Parent Engagement at Obeto Tetcha Education Center. And we have Life Point Church contributed some backpacks and school supplies for students in need to the Edgerton Elementary School. We have David Schauder contributed some monetary donation for instructional expenditures for Parkview Center School. We have Jeffrey Holland also contributed to, to Parkview Center School at principal's discretion. We have Steve Lukin also contributed to the weight room in Roseville Area High School. Karen Lukin, we thank you for also contributing to the weight room at Roseville Area High School. And finally, we have Black Bart Given, Giving Fund, York Cause, that also donated to the Roseville Middle School and to be used at principal's discretion. We are very, very appreciative and grateful for the community's support.
Thank you very much, Rose. And yes, as we keep saying, as always, we have such a generous community out there that we're so grateful for, for our kids and our staff and our schools in general. So thank you. With that, I think we go to the report and non-action items. And first up, it looks like, is the COVID health and safety update. And Dr. Look, who's sharing that tonight?
Three leaders, Josh Collins, Melissa Sonic, and Jake Bondalini.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, sure. Who will go first? Good evening, Chair Bogaszewski, directors. We're going to give you an update on COVID health and safety within our district and go over just a few things for you. So I'm going to start by talking about information that is available on our website, including our COVID-19 dashboard. This is a new year and as you're aware, that some of the guidance from the state and from the feds has changed. If families are interested in knowing what's going on in our schools right now with regard to health and safety measures, they can go to ISD623.org/COVID-19. And that'll bring you to a webpage that provides an overview of those, of the plan for this school year. You'll find there, as Michelle scrolls down a little bit, you'll find a wealth of information there and links. We also, one of the most important pieces that family members can access there is the daily screening at home tool. While the pandemic continues, it's very important that students, not come, students and staff, that is, come to school sick. And so we are, we continue to have the safety mitigation factor of the masks. We are having, of course, the start of flu season, which means that we are having a lot of symptoms in school. And so we appreciate families working with us as we're able to make sure students go home. We have been excited to share with families that we now have tests that can actually be taken home that are rapid tests. We have about one per student and those are available that families can request from their school. So I'm going to ask Michelle to go ahead and click on the frequently asked questions link. And there you'll find, this is new this year, or it's much expanded from last year, you'll find answers to the most common questions that folks have. We update this as things go along. For example, we recently heard from families wondering about the air filtration facts within our buildings. So we have updated information there for folks to take a look at. And then Michelle, if you wouldn't mind clicking on the dashboard. This will be familiar to you. We did have this up last year. One of the, I'd like to go in just for a moment to explain in detail these numbers for you. We are, of course, now all learning in person. Last year, you'll recall, there was another data point on this chart, which let you know how many of our students were learning in person versus learning from home because of that split method that we were employing. So we have all of our students and staff in person. You'll see that we'll report the number of positive COVID-19 cases within a building from a week. So that week of September 25th through October 1st. You'll see there that we had 23 students and seven staff members who were determined to be positive cases that were inside the school building. Next to that, we have the cumulative number for the year, which you'll see is 48 students and 14 staff members. And the furthest to the right numbers, this is the most complicated piece. And it differs from what we reported last year. So in, previously, we, we didn't have as many students with symptoms. So this number now includes people who are in quarantine and/or isolation over the week prior. It also includes anyone who has gone home sick with symptoms. And they may have only been out of the building for several days, but have gotten a negative COVID test, which allows them to come back into school. We are not yet able to separate out the numbers of students who just had symptoms that might not be related at all to COVID, but because of precautionary measures, we have sent them home to get that negative test to determine whether or not they have COVID. So it's, it's, whereas last year we could say, this is the number, 529 in that case, that's the number on that specific day that we know that number of students were out of the building or they couldn't learn because of isolation or quarantine. This doesn't quite adequately reflect that. So we are looking at ways to improve both the language on this. We've made some, some small changes to the language so that it's not wrong. But we still, we want to provide information that is not just accurate, but is also meaningful and will provide some utility to our families. And we're still working on that. We're also looking at other districts and what they report on their dashboards and what we will, will be sure to share with you what we end up determining in that regard. Now, if you'll scroll down, Michelle, you'll also find several important data points. The state of Minnesota has changed the way that they calculate the case rate for school districts. It's now based on 100,000 and the number of cases over seven days. Previously, it was per 10,000 over a rolling 14-day period. So we've changed that and we do have the latest numbers always there. These are updated daily. The numbers at the top are updated every week. And then another important thing, we know that some families are curious about what's going on at the building level and have been looking for data that might tell me a little bit closer to maybe that home school. And what we are reporting right now, as the state requires, is the number of schools, or not just the number, but the name of the school that has five or more positive cases in the building during a 28-day period. Once you get on that list, you have to go for 28 days without a case before you come off of that. So we have two of our schools on that list presently. That's Roseville Area High School and Falcon Heights Elementary. So we just wanted to share that update with you and make sure that viewers watching are aware of what we have publicly available for COVID data. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Good evening. So I would like to share an update on the process that we are using when we have to make a decision around quarantining a full class. So first, it's important to note that classroom closures are more likely in an early childhood or kindergarten through sixth setting than it would be in a 712 setting. This is because our younger students are together most of the day and because they eat meals and snacks together. In a 712 classroom, individual quarantine of students may be the most appropriate step. That said, there's always an investigation of each situation and we use that to determine if there is a specific, or need for a specific class to move into quarantine. So earlier this month, one of the things that we did was we met with the regional support team, which is made up of medical professionals, including, help me with the word. I want to say it's.
Epidemiologist.
Epidemiologist. And I practice it, you guys. So thank you, Josh, for sitting next to me. During this consultation, they helped us shape our process and it was also affirming to hear their feedback on many of our mitigation strategies, like masking for all and vaccines or weekly testing to have those options. So I'll share a brief overview of the process that we are using to make a decision to quarantine an entire class and then shift to distance learning. When there are two positives in a class with a third pending, what happens then is it triggers a conversation that could lead a classroom to transition into quarantine. Each such into distance learning is if we have half the class plus one in quarantine or isolation, that could also cause a shift, cause a shift to the full class into distance learning. And that's really for two reasons. One is to prevent the spread of COVID, but then also to ensure high-quality instruction takes place for all students. I think it's also important to note the process that takes place. So when a full class is going to shift into distance learning, the process that we use is health assistants first notify their building principal, as well as Dr. Lake and myself. If this is the first time that a school has gone through this process or quarantined a full class, we set up a Zoom meeting, which includes the building nurse, the principal, Dr. Lake, and myself, and we walk through those next steps together. If it's not their first time quarantining a class, then the Zoom meeting is not required, but the nurses can work with our COVID coordinator, Deb Leagann, as a consultation or just for support. When a decision is made to shift a full class into distance learning, then communication is sent to families. To put it into context, currently we have two full elementary classes and one CID class who have been or are currently in a 10-day quarantine, meaning they have shifted to that distance learning. So three classes altogether at this point in time. With that, I'll turn it over to Jake to talk more about what instruction during quarantine would look like.
Thank you. And I do have the look at what it is for a whole class or a whole school in quarantine. And so I think the bottom line that we talked about as a district is that if students are on isolation or quarantine, that learning continues. That's the main focus of what we should make sure that we're doing. Exceptions if a student obviously is ill and has, you know, negative symptoms with, or major symptoms with COVID and showing those things. Obviously, that would be a student that would be absent. But again, this is looking at the transition for, for the whole school or a whole class quarantine. We, we know that our students in K-5 won't have devices necessarily from the school. So we work with the families and the school to figure out who needs a device that is going to be at home. And in our sixth through 12th grade, we do have one-to-one iPads, so we know that, that that's not a barrier to continuing their learning. So we figure out who needs devices and potentially a hotspot at home to make sure that they have that internet connection. Typically, we have included in there to, to figure those things out, a one-day transition for that class, for that teacher, that school, to get those devices and, and needs to those families. During that time, the teacher can provide some additional activities like we did last, well, two years ago now in when we transitioned over to distance learning, some kind of paper pencil type of things that students can be working on. In our K-5, we work with CSOW to provide students the assignments. And we work with Schoology for our sixth through 12th, so teachers are posting assignments through that. And there is asynchronous as well as synchronous instruction throughout the day that's built in, as we did with our distance learning. And then there is also individual office hours that teachers provide for students to individually connect for questions, for further instruction, adaptation. I'm going to continue on and just talk a little bit about if a student is special education or an English language learner. For our K-6 students, they coordinate with the classroom teacher for, with their special education teacher to pull those students during some time during that synchronous instruction, so the student is live with that teacher as well. For our 712 students, they, for special education, the teachers work with the home, a home base instruction, so they provide that for our students if they are on the quarantine or isolation. And then EL students will receive synchronous instruction with their teacher. So that is a high-level overview of, of kind of the process of what we do when we figure out if a whole class or whole school would need to go into a quarantine-isolation situation.
Great. Thank you, team. Fellow board members, any questions or comments? Frank?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very relieved to know that, that number of 529 out on quarantine or isolation is not, or is effectively largely not, members of classes. But that brings up, so that means that, because I was worried when I saw that number on last Friday, that a lot of classes were out and that somehow the, the mask, the masking, which is supposed to protect us from whole-class quarantines, was not working. But it does bring up the question then of, I don't know if I'm being heard. It does, it does bring up the question of a teacher workload. If a teacher has two or three kids out, they obviously can't do synchronous instruction. But then are they having to, I guess, they were having to do stuff before, you know, when kids were sick. That's, that's part of the, part of the workday. Be treated differently than he or she would have been treated two years ago when they had the flu. And so I just would be interested to know to what extent the teacher burden has changed in, in this.
So we, we really had to explore that a lot with our teachers' union as well, so really trying to figure out what that looked like. We had a group of staff, including teachers, administrators, families as well, to really figure out what our plan should be for, for quarantine if a student goes out on quarantine or isolation. And we wouldn't have done that two years ago because typically a student is out for three to five days, right? And then is, is no longer. But with COVID, it's typically like a seven or a 10-day quarantine. And so we had said that the parameter would be if a student is out more than three days, then we would start providing them with home activities that they can be doing. It is something that, it is beyond what the teachers regularly scheduled lesson plans. It is separate learning that they're doing, so teachers are being compensated for, for that work as well, so that they're, it's not just an expectation that they, that they do that just out of their, I mean, most of them are doing that out of their own free will anyways, but, but are getting compensated for doing that extra work because it is an extra burden, as you say. So for sure, I want to acknowledge that. And what else, I was going to say also that, that there is some lessons that, that teachers have developed in the past, so that they're pulling some of that, like last year as they were out during distance learning, really focused on, especially at the elementary level, making sure that they have their English language arts instruction, as well as math instruction. And that's mostly through an asynchronous lesson that they would provide through CSOW, but.
Yeah. I'll add on to that too. I mean, because I think in a perfect world, they would, they, some teachers could have lessons that they've used in previous years in distance learning that they could share out. And we also realize that we don't live in a perfect world and that's not always the case. So that's why there is compensation for our K-6 teachers. For 712, it looks a little bit differently because they are able to work in Schoology, which is more of a standard practice. There are still some supports in place, but it does look a little bit different when you compare elementary to secondary.
It just occurs to me, thanks for that answer. It just occurs to me, thanks for that answer. It's thorough and good. Last year, I volunteered as a member of the community, helping with math at Mr. Church's class in, at Central Park. I'm wondering if there's opportunities for volunteering when these kids are, and it gives them, you know, a little bit more synchronous contact. I don't know whether, whether that's, because I know, I know that as volunteers, we're sort of discouraged from coming into the schools at this point, or at least we're discouraging ourselves about it. But I'm just wondering if that's, if that's been at all discussed or-
So one of the things we have is a volunteer visitor checklist, and so that, that's one step to try to ensure that the same processes we're using with students, right, about checking for symptoms, things, things like that we're considering. And then the process for volunteers is ensuring that we're using essential volunteers, which an academic volunteer would be more essential, so that could be something that would be worked out in the building or with the principal.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I appreciate the question about the teachers. I was actually having the same question, like, what is, what is the impact on our teachers? So I appreciate the support and the additional consideration for our teachers in terms of navigating the changes. So we talk about how there's, there's a process to shift online, so then what is the process to be going back, that return back to in-person? Like, what is the trigger? Like, how do, what are the conditions where you say, yep, enough, right, and then we go back to in-person?
Yeah, typically, it would just be at the 10-day. It would, it would just depend on what the, what the COVID team decided as their quarantine, whether it's a seven, 10, or however long that would be, and then they would shift back and transition those, those devices back, and the learning would be back in the classroom.
Okay, great. Then my question is, I do wonder, I mean, when you say there are three classes that have shifted, I do wonder from a communication whether that might be of, that might be good information for the community to know, right? That, yep, I mean, we are doing well, and there are three classes that are in quarantine. I mean, I don't know whether we want to name any class, or, I mean, we, we already named the school, right? Some of the schools, they have the five or more cases. So I was just thinking about communication-wise, that's, I think that's a good data point to know that we are trying everything we can, but there are times where one class needs to go into shifting, and then with the 10 days or seven days, they will shift back. So just, just wondering about that.
What was interesting, I'd like to say more about that, Josh, and what was interesting, too, is those two classrooms actually had a connection that, like, I cannot say enough about the quality and important work that our health offices, our nurse, our health aides, our COVID teams, our principals are doing in collaboration, but what they found in that situation, there was a connection on the bus. So they were actually related there. So that was helpful in unpacking that a little bit and notifying families on the bus as well.
I, I think that's useful for us as we, especially since we are continuing to review that dashboard and what data points are we putting out there. Just like you said, we want that data to be useful to people and meaningful.
It's, I got one more final, final question. When, so when we say that when it is five-plus, that, you know, we name the school, so is that a composite number, five-plus between students and staff, or what is the five-plus?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Bogushevsky, Director Chu. That is a combined number, so it could be five staff, it could be five students, it could be a combination.
Okay.
Thank you. Curtis, you had a question or comment?
Yes. Okay, so one thing, just, just confirming something I thought I heard. If a student is out for whatever reason for three or more days, then that's when they would essentially be doing school at home.
Correct, yes.
Can I add one more thing to that? The one caveat would be if we're transitioning a whole class. If the whole class is quarantined, then it would be after one day. That's what's tricky about some of these answers, is it's just very contextual.
Yeah, depends if it's an individual or if it's a whole class.
Right, okay, so if an individual, okay, is, is sick for whatever reason for, for three days or more, then the idea is that they would get, they, they would do school from home, so, so distance learning, essentially. So I guess my, my question is, is there been any thought about doing this as a process going forward, two, three years? Is, is this, would, would this be the, the new normal, as it were, if, you know, once we, that's weird it sounds, gets passed, get, get, you know, COVID is out the back door, if it just, if in general, if a student is out three days, that we have distance learning option for them?
All I heard you say is at some point, COVID will be out the back door, right? No, I don't mean to make light of it, but that is a really interesting notion of how does it look in the future. I haven't thought that for years.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, like, we are really in the thick of it right now. It's like, but I, but it does make me reflect on some of the things that we changed after we had gone through distance learning and thinking about, like, how we're continuing to do some of the practices around Zoom with conferences and different meetings and, and things, how, how things have changed, and as we had a chance to kind of reflect and look back, we were able to implement some of those things that we've been trying to do differently. So I would think that's probably something we will need to consider.
Yeah.
Good point.
Thank you.
Anything else from my colleagues? I have one question that, it might actually be for this team, though it's related. The end of this week on Friday is the start of the vaccine or increased testing policy. I'm just curious what the response has been from the staff to that and any expectations when that actually goes into effect of, of the rollout.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bogushevsky. In speaking with Lisa, our human resources director, my understanding is that she's not received really any negative feedback from staff on this. We are not requiring people to, to share their vaccine card, but we are requiring them to notify us of, or just acknowledge, provide that acknowledgement of receiving the vaccine or of their intent to go through weekly testing. So it has, it has gone over quite smoothly so far.
Great. It's good to know. Well, I thank our staff and teachers out there for understanding and going along with the program, because I think, you know, they obviously also see this is the way we can enable in-person learning. So thanks, thanks for that brief update. Thank you all. Again, good, good report, good numbers.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more as we work our way through the UHA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the next non-action item is the first reading of some policy edits to Policy 209, the school board operating procedures. As we talked about things like not requiring a speaker to state their address, and read through the policy, I and Michelle and Dr. Lake noticed that there were some things that needed some updating. Some of it was just correcting of error, some of it was some new thoughts that we put in. So Michelle, I can walk through it, or you can walk through it, however you want to do it. Can you, do you, can you page through it?
We'll be giving this minute.
Yep, great.
I do have a question while waiting. It's a separate question. I saw some of the great pictures from the grand opening. Are those pictures posted somewhere? From the, from the obeto? Oh.
Yeah, I was happy to share.
That'd be great, yeah.
We'll be close to ending the story about that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. So scroll down a little bit. I think on the first page, the only change was we brought Thursday into play from Monday, so this is a correction of the actual timeline, requiring the three, three full days to get something on the agenda. On page two, and continuing through the document, that's a suggestion of ex-board member, Kang Tao, I think a good catch. We did replace the word citizens with community members. As we all know, some of our students, some of our families are maybe in the process of getting citizenship or are, are new Americans, and so we didn't want anything to even imply that they would be excluded or weren't included, so we changed it to community members. Just clarified that if a community member contacts either the chair or a board member to have something on the agenda, then that would be brought to the full board by that board member that they contacted, so just clarified that a little bit. Let's see, next red one. Again, citizens, community members, citizens, community members. Maybe go down so we can fully read 7.2. So as we know, we've changed it so that we now have an electronic signup sheet that's available online for community members, community members to sign up. That's what we've used now the past two meetings. We have had and will continue to have a staff person at the, in the hall outside the boardroom, whether it's here or back at District Center or whatever, so that folks who arrive and wish to speak, that staff member will go ahead and input that into the online form for them. So we are not in any way requiring anybody to be computer literate or know how to go online or anything. If you want to, you can go online through a link on the website, right, my understanding is ahead of the meeting, and get your name on even before coming that day. But if someone comes and isn't aware of all this, they still will be allowed to speak from, from someone there. So we will have a, I guess, a virtual paper sign-in sheet, because we'll have someone there for the future to do that. Maybe we could clarify that and add the 7.2 language to that effect, that staff will be provided at the board meeting to allow, to enter speaker's information into the sheet who, who arrive. That, that would be a good thing. And thanks to Director Goggins, I think, for suggesting that. Keep going. Oh, and then we went from five minutes to three minutes. Just changed the gender pronoun to there, which is more consistent with what we're doing. Added something that, I don't think I added this, Michelle, I think this might have been from you or someone or a recommendation, just to make sure that if, if it's a thing that has to happen by law or is fairly minor, as, as this, this is a fairly minor revision, that we could condense the first and second meetings into one session. The theoretical process is three meetings. There's a first meeting to discuss it, then a second meeting that is the first reading, and then a third meeting that is the, the vote on approval. So this allows those firsts to be compressed, which frankly has been our practice for the last, the years that I've been on the board. So keep going. Then just clarifying, again, the third meeting or the second, if the first two are condensed. So that's what we're doing now. This is the first two condensed into tonight's reading, and so at our next meeting, that'll be the third meeting, or really the second meeting at which we can vote to approve it. And then the last one was just clarifying and bringing the language up to date with the technology, that it's within our area, it includes television, live streaming, YouTube or, and/or other media, so that should be correct for a while, you know, until we get actual Star Trek-like beaming into living rooms and things like that. We won't need to change this very frequently. And then the last line, non-broadcast work-study sessions, again, I was remiss in not recognizing how non-informational that was. And so I know Director Goggins, you had some thoughts on a specific language to perhaps put in there?
Yes. I would propose that we have non-decision-making informational meetings for the board, such as work-study sessions and workshops, will not be broadcast, but a report on what was discussed will be provided at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
So as a way to differentiate, to make sure that if there are any decisions are being made, that is being broadcast. To clarify that, I think is very important.
Thank you. I think it's a great explication, and that's what we do now during our study session later this evening, even though it won't be broadcast. The public and the community is, of course, welcome to come and attend, and each of those study sessions, one of us volunteers to take notes, and then at our next meeting, we will have a report out on what occurred during that, during that study session or that work session. So Katie, you'll give that text to Michelle if we, are there any other thoughts, questions, additions, edits, as we've gone through the first reading? I'll open it up to everyone.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up, I mean, this whole policy to make some adjustment. I did see there was something about the delegation, like, what constitute a delegation?
Right, so let us say that there was an organization, let's say it was the Bogushevsky Neighborhood Council, and there were 27 of us that decided to come to a meeting and share. What we would ask is that that delegation as a group be allowed 10 minutes, however they want to apportion it. They could have 27 people speak for 25 seconds or whatever it would be. Frank can correct my math. Or, or one person for all 10 or whatever, but that, that's what it means. And if there's a delegation of a group of people, just again, to help with communication and give everyone a fair chance to, to, you know, speak at the meeting, so.
And I guess the reason I brought it up is that I just want us to be clear, right? And I'm not worried about the, the larger group, because that's usually the case.
Yes.
If you think about the smaller delegation, how small is considered a delegation? So that people have equitably be able to speak?
I see. So it could be-
I mean, if you think about the math, right, then it would be like-
Right. Like, if a delegation is three people, and we say it's 10, that's actually more than three each, so that's actually, so it may be that 10 minutes or less, depending on number in the delegation, or something like that.
Yeah, or, or, yeah, something to clarify, right?
Right, right. A delegation of two should really still get only six minutes, three each, not 10 minutes. Okay, all right. Thank you.
So that's the thing that I thought about. I guess the other thing I thought about, too, is the, the fact that some of this, we are also adhering to the open meeting law.
Yes.
So I don't know whether we reference that somewhere? Because I, I, I do think that, I mean, me included, right? Kind of when you're new to understanding how the board interacts with the community, oftentimes, you know, we have to adhere to the open meeting law. And, and a reference to that become like, you know what? It is not because we decided not to do something. It is part of the open meeting law, that we all have to follow as elected officials.
So it could even be adding something at the very top of the policy that says, you know, this policy is in accordance with and guided by legislative statutes regarding open meeting law as they apply to school boards, or something like that.
Something like that.
And I'd rather keep it that general, not necessarily even put in the specific statute citation, because that changes sometimes every year. Katie?
I'm wondering if on 7.0, where we say community input and participation at board meetings, that we should restate that all board meetings, workshops, any type of gathering of the board is an open meeting and community is welcome to attend?
I think there are some exceptions per open meeting law, right? There's exceptions.
But I mean, just making it clear, because I don't think that's quite inviting enough or clear enough.
A lot of people don't know that, right?
Right, so it could be, even in 7.1, saying, saying something like, and, and this, you know, community members are invited to all board meetings, including study sessions and informational sessions, unless otherwise prohibited by law or something like that. Because if it's a closed meeting or whatever, that would allow it. Yeah, that's, are you getting that? Okay, thank you. Michelle, our, our extraordinary person whom we couldn't live without.
Because I know there was some confusion around, you know, why can't we do this online or in-person, and it's like, those are not our decisions, right? They were really governed by the open meeting law.
Well, and some, some things are, are decisions. I learned today, I happened to be able to be in a meeting with Superintendent Lake and, am I blanking on his name?
Kirk Snyderwin.
Kirk Snyderwin, the president of MSBA, and apparently, just given the heated nature of some, of some board meetings across the state, some boards have decided recently to not broadcast and not, not show the community input session, but I think, you know, we've felt we want to do that, that we believe that's being transparent and showing the community everything. So I think we do want to be as open and as transparent and welcoming as possible, regardless of the sense or mood or tone of, of what's, of what's told to us.
But I think you're right, right? Some things are definitely because of the statute that we comply with.
Yes.
And then other things is how, what is, what is our approach in, in interacting with the community? So I think being clear on that might be really helpful for all of us.
Yep, I agree.
To remind ourselves, right? Kind of, there are some things that we get, we decided on that. We decided to have, say, community input, or we decided to, so I'm, I'm just kind of bringing that up.
No, that's a great thought. You know, as an example, you know, I know some have questioned, why don't we even respond or interact with speakers? But it's really because we, it's adherence to open meeting law. If a speaker were to come and say, dear board, I believe the earth is flat, and I think you should teach that as an alternative in your science curriculum, we, we have never discussed that issue as a board. And so we- your science curriculum," we have never discussed that issue as a board. And so we can't respond because everything we do has to be as a board. And so then that community member could ask a board member to put that on a future meeting, we could discuss it, and then have a board consensus. And then we could, you know, it would come out in that meeting and that discussion that, again, is open to the public. But if we got into it that night, there may be people who are watching on TV, you know, over in Little Canada or Falcon Heights, and they say, "Wow, if I'd have known they were going to talk about that tonight, I would have wanted to have been there." And so it has to be that three day in advance. So it is very complicated and complex. So thanks for the suggestions.
And I think, you know, for all of us too, right, sometimes the topic, this is where we go into work-study.
Yes.
Because it's to be able to learn and deliberate, but not make any decision, right? And so knowing that those are also public is to say that we are all learning about XYZ, right, a certain topic. We have presentations. We ask a district leadership to kind of tell us what is going on before we make any decision or deliberate on anything. So I think that process of kind of like, there are decisions we make as a board, and then there are things that we discuss more as a learning, as a learning to help us understand how to make the decision if it comes to that point.
Exactly. Good points. Thank you. Other thoughts, additions, improvements? Kitty?
I was just going to add that another thing that I've always been explained by the state organizations, part of the reason boards don't respond is because we only have voice as an entire board, not as individual board members.
Right.
And so when we respond, we have to respond as a board.
As a board, yeah.
And that's a clarification that's not necessarily similar with other types of government that might be helpful for folks to understand.
Yep. Okay. Got all that, or we'll get you the text, and then we'll look forward to the second reading and then moving into a potential approval of changes. Thank you. With that, we go to our first action item. And I think this will be introduced, if I'm not mistaken, by Sheri Thompson, our business director, and I believe also a guest from AILers, who I'll allow Sheri to introduce. And I think we're going to hear some good news, right?
That's right.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Yes, we do have some good news. And I have with me Shelby McCray from Ellers, who is a familiar face to all of you. We did have a bond sale today, bond refinancing. The board authorized that a month ago. I will say just a couple of high points. The bond refundings or the bond sales in the refundings, if we have a savings, that's passed directly to our taxpayers. It reduces the levy. That's the way it works with any kind of debt levy, which is actually great news. And we do have some good news to share, and Shelby will go through. You all have the sale day report. And the other thing that I would say as part of this exercise, every time we go through a bond sale, we have a credit rating call with Moody's. And as the board knows, we have been working very diligently, the board and the administration, for the last several years because our bond rating was downgraded because of our low fund balance. So, and I will just bring your attention to the fact that at the back of the sale day report, on the attachments on page six, the rating outlook, we have received a positive outlook. We received that when we did the certificates of participation, I think, last March, because it had been stable, and we have been working very hard on this. And what Moody's is saying is if the district secures passage of an upcoming operating levy renewal in increase, then the rating is likely to move upward. And we haven't had such a strong statement from Moody's because that's not what they do, right?
Yeah.
So I'm very hopeful about this. And I'm hopeful that, yes, we will get the resources that we need come November 2nd. And when we sell bonds, LTFM bonds, we'll be doing that in 2022. That will be reflected as far as our credit rating goes. So I will hand it off to Shelby.
Yeah, that's a good introduction to this sale day report. This is purely informational, but your action item tonight is the resolution to award the sale. You received four bids, and the winning bid was Bank of New York Mellon. So just kind of overall, these are just the refunding bonds. There's just a few maturities left. The summary of the sale results is listed on that second page. You did receive a very significant premium, and you'll see why in a later schedule. But that allowed you to reduce the borrowing amount and kind of goes into that overall savings. So we had anticipated during the pre-sale about a month ago that you'd receive about a 1.1, 1.09 as a true interest cost. And we received a true interest cost of .56 to date. And what that did compared to pre-sale is save about $174,000 versus the $143,000 that we were estimating. And like Sheri mentioned, this is not going to go to your general fund. There's 43, about $43,000 of savings each year, and that will go to lower the tax levy. Now, of course, you submitted your truth and taxation levy, and so what is going to go on the tax statements is that higher amount that you had already levied for the bond payment. But then incorporated in the final levy would be these savings and hopefully the passage of that operating referendum. So just going through, the bid tab shows the bidder. So national interest tonight or this morning on your bonds, Bank of New York, Hilltop out of Dallas, Baird, kind of the Midwest bidder, and then FHN out of Memphis. And you'll see that we awarded on the true interest rate. That's what competitive bids are most commonly awarded on, that takes into account the overall purchase price and the time value of money. You'll see there that they offered 5% coupons. So that is where your premium that you received, that almost that over $300,000, is going to go to offset the interest costs from those 5% coupons. So that's why it's all incorporated into the true interest rate. So then the sources and the uses is shown on the next page. There was $2.67 million of bonds to be refunded, and you'll see that we're only issuing 2.4. That's going into that, you know, lowering that premium, or the premium lowering that principal amount too. So you're borrowing less to pay off that previous issue. The prior original debt schedule is on page three. The new debt schedule is on page four, where you'll see those new fiscal year totals. And then the true interest cost is listed sort of in the center of the page at .56. On the last page is really that summary of the levy savings, or the principal and interest savings. The levy is, of course, 105% of that. And as a percent of debt service, you're at about 5.9%. We were anticipating 4.6% on the overall savings. So, you know, across the board, great news on the overall savings. And, you know, as Sheri mentioned, that positive outlook is really what we're kind of hoping for at that next go-around. This was a pretty relatively small issue for what you're accustomed to issuing lately. And the facilities maintenance bonds will be larger. So hopefully we'll see that positive outlook acted on in the next rating and hopefully an upgrade at that time. So happy to answer any questions on this summary and, of course, the action item as well.
Questions? Kitty?
Because they apply the state rating, which is obviously higher than our rating, and that's typically what they're using to assess it, how much impact do you expect the local rating, if in fact that would improve to really have on what kind of offers we're getting?
So it's really hard to tease out the effects because every issue has a different term. And of course, the size of the block sizes matters too. But we generally say that for every notch in the credit rating, you're looking at about five basis points. And so that AA2 rating of the state's credit enhancement would moderate that five basis point notching downward. So it's really hard to kind of quantify the actual, the number. And it also would depend on the underwriters purchasing the bonds. Sometimes they are looking at just that insurance rating, that credit enhanced rating, and sometimes they dig in a little bit more. So we always think it matters. We just can't ever exactly quantify.
Just another question. Why is it desirable for the lenders to use the premium aspect versus a different interest rate? I mean, why is that premium element in there?
Yeah, it's because if you look at the summary, they're really looking to provide the yield in the secondary market. So what investors are looking for is yield on the bonds. And so sometimes they need to pay more in order to resell them, pay more than the face value so that they can have them, and then they can resell them to other investors. And so in order to generate yield, you need to pay more than the face value.
I see.
And lots of other calculations, but simple, thank you.
Other questions? So I have one.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work on this. This is such great news. And so, thank you, Sheri. Thank you very much.
So the extent that this will have a positive effect on the levy, right, is, what's ordered back to you? Is it like, you know?
Hurt me.
Is it like two cents, three cents, a buck?
Well, yeah, because it's spread across, right, the entire tax base.
Right.
And of course, this has been one of our smaller refundings. But anytime, Ellers has been a great partner in looking at this. When bonds come up, when there's a call date, to look at those savings. Again, this is, as Shelby had mentioned, this is one of our smaller ones. But we do look at that because we want to be very mindful of the taxpayer dollars.
Sure.
So you've already certified the maximum levy. So as far as the property tax statements that go out in November, again, that's based on September. So that doesn't include the expiring levy authority, operating levy, no new, you know, new authority because obviously the election hasn't taken place.
Right.
Or it also doesn't reflect this. But when you do your final levy certification in December, what actually happens on property tax statements will be reflected. All of that will be reflected, including this, come March.
March, the March statements.
Yep. Yes, and we really do appreciate working with you and, you know, being able to fit all these pieces together. And like you were saying, it's not a lot, but I think the alternative is, you would say, we didn't take the opportunity to save the taxpayer dollars. And that's certainly not what we would want you to put in, be in the position of. The point is to take advantage of the savings and pass it back when you can.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the recommended sale as worded.
So moved.
Second.
And then any other discussion, board members? Doesn't look like it. Clark Johnson, it is recommended that we take a roll call vote on this.
Very good then. Okay. Director Anderson?
I vote aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
Clark Johnson votes aye.
All right. Thanks very much. That passes. Yeah, thanks for all your work on this.
Greatly appreciated.
With that, we move to the board reports.
Oh, we're there already.
So anyway, Todd?
I'm going to like speed. I've had a couple items I want to mention. I've had the opportunity to attend over the past couple weeks to some wonderful, fantastic events between the Roseville Police Department and Roseville Area High School students. And I have seen also some of my colleagues at those, well, at those events as well. A couple of weeks ago, there was a great event at Flaherty's Bowling Alley. Everyone was having fun, you know. And I even got to bowl for Officer Aaron Reske, and that was a thrill. I think I improved her score. I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that I didn't hurt her score. And then again, today, I was at a fantastic, a wonderful kickball event. I'm outside. A little bit of it was in the drizzle. But I just want to commend these events for taking place. It's about building relationships between the Roseville Police Department and our Roseville Area High School students. It's about building trust. I want to thank Officer Aaron Reske, the Roseville Police Department for partaking, Principal Chris Hester and the Roseville Area High School staff for partaking in these, for planning these events. And I know there will be some coming down the road, but they've been wonderful. They've been fantastic, and everyone is enjoying themselves. I think it's a good thing that these are happening.
Thank you, Todd.
And then the second thing is, earlier this evening, we heard from Director of Community Education, Karen Schaub. We did learn within this past week that she will be retiring. And we do get her for the rest of this year, which I am very thankful for. That's fantastic. I want to acknowledge her 44 years of educational leadership with this district and other districts she's been in. She's worked with six different superintendents. You know, and I just know personally your passion, your dedication to community members, all of our learners from pre-K to our seniors. It's just been phenomenal, Karen. And I know we still have a few months with you, but I just want to kind of start the thank yous now. You know, I've enjoyed working with you every minute. Thank you.
I just wanted to build on what Todd was saying about the events that have been occurring. To put it in context with the school resource officer work that's been doing, and how the district has really been working to build that relationship and strengthen that relationship in some very non-traditional ways. And it was wonderful to see not just the school resource officer there, but other police officers, and really building that community connection and relationship with their students. Because there were like 35 students at that Flaherty event. It was really, really wonderful to see. I had a chance to attend the Rams Technology Night, and Rose was there as well. It was an opportunity for the families to learn about Avid, the dual-language immersion, English learner services, special ed services, how they can support their students in terms of some of the technology elements, and how the various apps their students are using, and after-school activities, just a whole variety of things. And I was very impressed that the Rams staff and leadership had put together such a comprehensive opportunity for parents to participate. And I hope that we can continue that and get more, even more parents involved in taking advantage of that because there were some really fantastic resources there. The other thing that I wanted to mention was the high school open house last night. It was phenomenal to see, and it was wonderful to see so many of our community members come out to see it. The facilities, there was the art, the music, the current technical, the science. I mean, there was two whole wings that were kind of on display in terms of what the generosity of our community in the 2017 referendum passage, the, what allowed the district to do for our students. And one of the things that I really love about that is how we spent that money on the students and really focused on where they're going to get some benefit. And there's some wonderful additional opportunities for students because of that. We certainly heard how many more students could take the Woods class, and that's always been a limiting thing, or some of the other classes that are particularly popular that haven't been able, we haven't been able to meet student demand or student desire in the past. So that was really wonderful to see. And thank you again to the generous community.
Thank you. Anything else from this side of the room?
Just briefly, the 916 board meeting was last Wednesday. The joint powers agreement is inching its way toward completion and acceptance, as it has been for a while. And the other thing is, we heard a long presentation, and very interesting one, about teacher retention and the whole program. There is quite a well-developed program at 916 for teacher retention. They seem to be having a good record of that. And I thought it would be good, I know we have mentorship and various things going on, but it might be good to get a report on that sometime, or a study session report on what's being done in Roseville to, not only to mentor the teachers as they first come in, but to support them through their first few years.
Thank you, Frank. Rosa Curtis, anything for you this evening?
I guess we're going down the line today.
Yep.
Okay. I would add a couple of things. I think Kitty, you were there, and I was there at the 9 North celebration, 30-year celebration.
Yep.
Yep.
So this is formerly known as, I don't remember.
CTV.
CTV, right? Yeah, so they have been in service for 30 years. So it was really nice to be part of the celebration. And, and I have to say, one of the best conversations I had was meeting someone who was asking about the levy. And so as a school board member was to explain the difference between levy and, you know, bonds. And so that was always helpful, right? Anytime we have a chance to explain the difference. She was very appreciative that, that like, oh, that clarifies, right? That clarifies as to why we are asking for money again, kind of thing. So, so that was, was a really nice event and I didn't know a lot of the history, so I know it's a great community partner in Roseville. The other thing is almost a reflection for me, I, you know, in my second year as a school board member, I finally get to do a lot of in-person stuff. And one of them was attending the Parkview Center School PTSD meeting in person. And I have done it online every so often, but what a difference. And I am so appreciative of parents who really, their commitment to get together and really think about how to support the school, right? I just, I mean, I know that that's one of the many groups, there are many groups across the district who do that. And to listen to how they are planning and thinking about how do we acknowledge our teachers, how do we support our teachers, how do we fundraise, I'm just very grateful, right? I'm just very grateful for the parents out there who are trying to support our schools and our staff, our teachers and our students. So I just wanted, it's a little reflection for me to, to be so real, to be in the midst of that conversation, so. Another thing I would say is that I represent Roseville Area School on the Ramsey County League of Local Government, it's a mouthful. And the monthly meeting this time was about homelessness in Ramsey County. It was an amazing presentation about what Ramsey County, particularly in St. Paul, trying to understand how to serve and how to meet the needs of many of our homeless, homeless families and youth and people in general. So that could be a whole, like, whole presentation itself to debrief, but it was really, really made you think about how, the pandemic especially, right? Even pre-pandemic, there were a lot of issues and the pandemic got people actually working together between county and city officials. And, and we talk a lot about as Ramsey County, how do we make sure that as a group that we are paying attention to what those resources are? So that was a very helpful presentation that I went to. And the final thing I will say is I had a chance to attend a beautiful memorial service of one of my neighbors. Her name is Glenda Wilinsky. She and her husband Tom were teachers in Roseville for over 30 years. And it was clear in how she was as a teacher, as an educator, and the room, the service was full. There was a lot of talk about her as a teacher, the caring teacher that she was, and the different roles that she played at Roseville. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and both of them gave like a combined of 60 years of service to Roseville Area Schools. So wanted to acknowledge her and her life and really celebrate her accomplishments.
Thank you. Curtis?
Okay, I'm going to echo a couple of things that have already been said, in particular, the event at Flaherty's was really amazing to see. We had 12 Roseville officers that came out to bowl with, you know, our kids and they were just enjoying it themselves. And just for anyone who needs to know, Principal Hester was almost bowled a, almost got a turkey. So if you, if you ever have to bowl, make sure you're on her team. Was also able to attend the opening of, the grand opening of Apetutetja and that was absolutely amazing. I just can't say enough about it and, which leads me to, and will probably be doing this for the next couple of months. Karen Schaub, my God, okay. Karen and her team do not get enough credit for the work that they've done during, during this time. Moving everybody over into the new building, keeping everything, keeping all the programs moving while we were building this, 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 this other building. And the amenities are tremendous and she worked very hard to get input from everybody that is in that building. And, and that's, that's really important. And not enough, not enough people do that. So thank you Karen for all of that work, all the things that you've, you've done just since I've been on the board. It is, it is greatly appreciated and I, I will definitely miss you, but you're not going anywhere yet, so. That takes us to our grand opening on E-Wing. I, and I do have assurances that if you missed the chance to take a tour of our new facilities at the Roseville Area High School, then you just need to call and schedule something. It is really, it is really incredible. We talk a lot about preparing children for career and/or college and really the changes that are in that building embody that. So you just gotta, you really just kind of have to see it. And if you can get Principal Hester to take you, she actually gets the best stories. I had the opportunity to attend an AMSD board meeting and this one was very special. We had, we had some very special guests. We had some, we had students from Minnetaka, Osseo, St. Paul and Roseville Area School District. So I'm going to, I want to specifically give a shout out to Jennifer from Roseville Area High School who did a tremendous job. We, at AMSD, we wanted to really hear student voice. And it was great because when you do that, you're going to hear some things that, that, you know, you don't necessarily want to hear. But on the flip side, there were things that were stated where we could say, yeah, actually we're doing that. Yes, we're fighting for that. Yeah, look, look over here, you know? So there, there were things that, the thing, the great takeaway for me is, is that, you know, at AMSD, we are moving in the right direction. Are there things that we need to keep greater focus to? Absolutely. And we shall do that. But I hope we will always use this opportunity to get more student voice. It should not be once a year kind of thing. And then last but not least, I was, I was able to attend a very impromptu gathering at AMSD Williams last night with some community members that brought chalk and used that opportunity to write messages to support to Principal Colon. Same thing was done at EDW, I'm sorry, at Ederton. And so when the kids came in this morning, they saw all these messages of support. I'm on the record of referring to the Roseville Area Schools community as a family and I stuck by that. And I know that there are a number of people in our family who, who are hurting right now and, and are sad. I'm sad. I am. And that's okay. And I need you to tell your kids, it's okay. And to our wonderful teachers and staff who were beyond exceptional today, it's okay to be sad. So that ends my
Thank you. Just briefly, another Apetutetja comment. I think that I was there, as we all were at the grand opening, as we saw me with those heavy, those were like 10-pound scissors. Those are the real deal. And as I noticed, they, they were sharp at the point too. They were not like kid scissors with the rounded thing. So we definitely didn't want to run with those scissors. But yeah, it just struck me when I was there and even in tonight, as we were looking through the lovely pictures that Karen shared with us earlier, just how, how long and massive of a project that was. And it really did start over three years ago. I remember us on the tour of the old building with the engineering firm and it being pointed out to us with various structural, you know, flaws, why we'd have to even do a new building versus try to repair the old one. And in the process that Dr. Aldo Sikoli, superintendent at the time, started with his leadership and continued so wonderfully under Dr. Lake as she took over for him, all the community involvement, just thank you to the community that came to all those meetings. Remember all those meetings we had where people that live in the area would share their thoughts on things like how high the shrubbery should be and, you know, what side of the building the parking should be on? So both big picture items and small picture items. And I think all that's kind of listened to and reflected and what we got is just a wonderful facility, wonderful site, that it's not just the district or the architects who did it. It is the community who did it too. It is the swim team that came and the swim club advocates for, with their thoughts on how deep the pool should be and how long it should be. And again, I think in the end we got something that everyone who lives in this district can be proud of, particularly those who did show up and go to those planning sessions and share their input and make their thoughts known. And, and I think it's really, it's really come out at least as well as everybody envisioned. So, and maybe a final word, just a particular call it again to Dr. Mike Favor, who has left us, and to Curtis Johnson, who were our board rep and administrative rep on the American Indian Parent Committee. And as we know, we had invited them to be really deeply involved in the process to come up with a recommended name and that's where the Apetutetja, New Day, comes from. And so thank you Curtis specifically for your helping shepherd that through the group. I know it was not a short process because they took it extremely seriously and had, had prayer sessions and thought sessions about it. And I think, again, what we ended up with was just perfect for, for what we'd hoped for and what we need. So thank you to the community for that. It is really your facility too. So that was it. Now, we only have one item on the study session. Usually we take like a five-minute break. After we adjourn, do you want to just power through? Or do we need to take a break? Let's just, let's just
Can we do two minutes for signatures and then do the study session?
Okay, we'll do a two-minute break then. So what will happen is I'm going to adjourn, just so everyone knows, I adjourn the meeting and then it's not broadcast and then we'll come back in two minutes for the informational study session, which has one agenda item, and it's a new course proposal that we're going to hear about. So we adjourn. Thank you.
I think I got something.